Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the regular council meeting to order this evening. And council, if I could have adoption of minutes, please.
So move the regular meeting minutes of June 26.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
And move the regular council land use of June 26, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move minutes from regular council public hearing, June 26, 2017.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And before we get into the public hearing portion of the evening, I want to just take a moment to recognize two very special individuals who are with us tonight. Our city manager, Vince Lalonde. We take great pride in longstanding-serving experienced staff at city, and I know this is a surprise to you, Vince, but it is 20 years that Mr. Lalonde has been with the city of Surrey. And council and I have had the honor to value your leadership and over these many, many years, and your ability to bring people together. It also should be noted that Vince has a great sense of humor and is a diehard Montreal Canadiens fan.
We won't hold that against him, Madam Mayor.
It is about the only time when Vince has no sense of humor.
In France.
So Vince, I do want to congratulate you on your 20 years of service with the city and your distinguished career thus far with us, and we're very grateful to have you on board and for your continued leadership. I wonder if you could come forward and make your way up here so that we can present you with your 20-year service pin. [applause] And, of course, a Montreal Canadiens fan. is retiring, and we have been the privilege of having Nicola with us for over a decade. Her smiling face has graced our halls and managed our human resources department, and quite frankly, she has been an incredibly valued member of our senior management team, and she has defined and implemented the city's core values, in fact, has set the stage for our city to be recognized as one of the top employers in the entire nation, and we're very grateful to have had the privilege of her service to the city of Surrey for more than a decade. So we know you're going into retirement, Nicola, but we value your service, and I'd like to give you your 10-year service pin and recognize you this evening. Also, council, this evening we have an item on our agenda for consideration. It's the very last item on our agenda under the Clerk's report, which is a delegation request from a Stephen Pettigrew and Tracy Woodhams to appear as a delegation, and I know regarding the concerns on the 105 Connector Road, and I know there are several people in the audience who have joined this evening to be here. I just wondered if we could move that forward so that they don't have to stay for the...
Council committee meeting on June 24.
To be heard at CIC?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, secondary? All those in favor, opposed, and that is approved for a delegation in front of council at the July 24 meeting. So you're quite welcome to stay for the duration of the public hearing, but we have dealt with that item. And Madam Clerk, now if we could move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda this evening, under B1.
The first bylaw is zoning amendment by law 19306. The address is 25...
Just wait a sec. Just maybe wait for the chamber to clear. Okay. I just thought that was...I thought that might save a bit of time. Okay, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Okay, the first up is a zoning amendment by law 19306. The address is 2561 141st Street. The applicant is Overseas Homes Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to half-acre residential. The applicant's proposing to subdivide the property into two half-acre single-family lots. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the lot width from 98 feet to 82 feet for proposed lots 1 and 2 in order to match the width of the existing lots to the west.
We have no correspondence on table relative to this bylaw, but I do have persons signed up not wishing to speak, all in favor of the bylaw four. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the bylaw number one on our agenda this evening? This will be my last call for number one. Madam Clerk, the next bylaw, please.
Next, the next bylaw is zoning amendment by law 19307. The address is 16297 and 16307 15th Avenue. The applicants are Nick and Gina Kalashkinov and Tim and Anne Baird. The applicants are seeking to rezone the site from single-family residential to multiple residential 30. The applicants are proposing to develop it into 21 townhouse units. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the setbacks along the north, east, and west property lines in order to allow for an efficient site plan and a maximum tree retention.
We have on table two letters in opposition and four letters in support, and this evening we have persons signed up not wishing to speak, two of them both in support of the project. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number two this evening? Last call for the second bylaw of the evening. Madam Clerk, next bylaw, please.
Is zoning amendment by law number 19308. The address is 16537 8th Avenue. The applicants are Fred Nizovich and Joyce Eastland. The applicants are seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to single-family residential. The applicant's proposing to subdivide the property into six single-family lots with a portion of the site being dedicated to the city for the completion of 8th Avenue Frontage Road between 165th Street and 165 A Street. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the lot depth for the proposed lots 5 and 6 in order to allow for an efficient lot layout.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have signed up in opposition 16 letters, and then one is a form letter with 65 signatures, all in opposition. Persons not wishing to speak and who have signed up this evening are four in favor of the bylaw and 14 opposed. I have several people wishing to speak to the bylaw, and we'll go through the names here. Seven are on the list. First one up is David Gill.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors. My name is David Gill. I live at 877 165 A Street, three homes from the subject property. On behalf of my wife Kathy and our neighbors, I'm speaking in opposition to certain elements of this proposal. I'd like to preface my remarks, first of all, by saying we're not in...I'm not in opposition to the development. This is a residential acreage property in a community of residential, single-family homes, so we understand it's going to be developed. What we do want...what I do want to talk about are two key elements. The first is traffic. So as a part of this proposal, there's a request and an initiative to extend 8th Avenue Frontage North. Madam Mayor, may I ask your support in having the Cosmo's aerial view displayed on the document camera? I think it would make it easier.
Could we get the drawing up there? Does that help, sir?
Yes, that's helpful. I think it's useful for all viewing. So we live on 165A. This is a little bit difficult to see because you can't see the upper part of this, but this is a single-point entry subdivision with access to 165A and 166 off of 10th Avenue. It's a loop. I used to say I was living on a cul-de-sac. A person I respect corrected me and said, "I'm living on a loop," and I agreed. So point is that with this development, 8th Avenue Frontage North, which is the south part of this property, will move...will connect through to 8th Avenue Frontage North to the west. 8th Avenue Frontage North to the west and 165 Street are directly connected to 8th Avenue, which is a major thoroughfare. So if this frontage road is connected through, it has the effect of connecting our community, our neighborhood, from being a closed loop to having direct access between 8th Avenue and 10th Avenue. That dramatically and fundamentally changes the nature of our neighborhood. The 8th Avenue roundabout, King George, attract a lot of traffic to and from White Rock and other areas. It's going to become very obvious to those that live in the community or that drive along 8th Avenue, they're going to see this connected road, they're going to see the access from 8th Avenue Frontage North at 165, and it would become a bypass route between 8th Avenue and 10th Avenue. It's going to offer an option for people rat-running, and our community is, as a closed-loop, non-through road, it's a very safe neighborhood. The roads are safe. We have a mix of ages. We have young children, we have seniors. They walk, they bike, they walk their dogs, they stroll, they chat. Children play, children cross the street to meet their friends. With through traffic, it changes the nature. Today, it's only residents, family, friends, and service providers that drive on our roads. So, Madam Mayor, councilors, our ask to you is that 8th Avenue Frontage North not be made a through road, that 8th Avenue Frontage North only be extended to the point that it provides access to the two lots facing south, and that not be a through road that fundamentally changes the character of our neighborhood. That's the first point. Secondly, as you can see from this view, there are a lot of trees associated...are you able to focus that in a little bit more, sir, with the document camera? Can we zoom it in? Thank you very much. So as you can see, the subject lot is very heavily treed. In fact, there are some beautiful Douglas firs. There's nine Douglas firs, three grand firs, that are on this property. They play an important role in providing a noise barrier to the community and to 8th Avenue. So as a part of the development, we understand that a number of these trees need to be removed. However, today, they are...they play a very important role in the neighborhood for supporting wildlife, birds, including bald eagles, owls that come to roost in those. Just to clarify, there's no eagle's nest in these trees, but they do like to visit. So in the tree report, which I wonder, Madam Mayor, if I could ask your support to view drawing T-1 in the tree report, is that possible to display that?
Mr. Planner, do we have that?
So, thank you very much. So in the tree report, if you look at these large circles down the east side of the development, there's the frontage road that will be expanded from a width...sorry, not the frontage road, 165A on the right side of this will be expanded in order to provide a consistent width from top to bottom. With that, unfortunately, we lose trees 100, which is top-right. It's a 150-centimeter diameter redwood, sorry, Douglas fir. 326, another one down the way, and then along the bottom with the frontage road, there are three 158, 117, 131-centimeter Douglas firs at the bottom with the frontage road. These trees are between 200 and 300 years old and are an important part of the noise masking, sound masking, and tree canopy in this area. So we are...we understand a number of these need to go to support the development, but our ask is that council work...instruct that this project go back to planning, go back to traffic, go back to the arborist, so that we can determine how it's possible to save more of these trees and how we can configure a way to not make this a through road to protect the safety of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gill, for your comments. I have a couple of questions for you, sir. Okay. And I will ask the audience to hold their applause so we can get through the number of speakers that we have. I have questions for you, sir.
Yes.
Counselor Woods.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Just for everybody's information, Counselor LeFrank and I did meet with Mr. Gill here and some of his other neighbors on this past Friday. And, Mr. Gill, I just want to get one thing clear here. There is a form letter on here, and it's been signed by Graham Cale, but it's also got the notation, 65 form letters in opposition of the project. Now, is that the form letter that you circulated?
We put together a suggested letter that we provided to the neighbors. If they agreed with those points, they could sign it, and we would send those in. In addition, a number of people wrote their own emails and letters and submitted those, and frankly, I don't know what those are, how many. I know that I personally, since I had scanning ability, in order to get the deadline of 4:00 p.m. today, I put those together into four packages, sent them to the clerk.
Okay. So I assume, Madam Mayor, that...I'm looking at page 21 of the package.
Yep.
And there's one that addresses in that form letter, I believe it is, the traffic patterns, proposed lot size, the floor area ratio, and the tree issue.
Right.
Right. Okay. So there's 65 letters that were signed. Okay, I just thank you very much. We do have other correspondence on the table, but I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Woods. Counselor Gill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, if I could just get staff to help me with putting Cosmos back on the overhead, and in fact, I'd want to just be able to see 8th and 10th. Do you think you could either bring that down a little bit?
Bring it down, yes.
So, Mr. Gill, I just want to better understand the context of rat-running, and I just want to be really clear in terms of my mind. So are you suggesting that there'd be non-area residents that would be running through this network of 8th Avenue North? Is that correct?
Yes. So if...so today, 8th Avenue is the only access to 165 Street and to 164A to the west of the subject development property. So today, that is an area that is...it's open. As soon as 8th Avenue Frontage North is connected, that provides a contiguous route from 8th Avenue through that frontage road up through 165A to 10th. So we believe there is a risk of rat-running. In addition, in the summer, anybody that has tried to attend an event in White Rock knows the traffic that travels east and west along 8th Avenue. When things get busy in White Rock, we already have, I would say, creative parkers that find their way into 165 Street or that see the current 8th Avenue Frontage North at the bottom of our loop, and they will make their way into the community and park there and then walk down to White Rock. As soon as we open up this loop to 8th Avenue through that connection at 165 and those trees come down, it's going to be very clear to everybody that goes west from the cul-de-sac at King George Boulevard and 8th Avenue that here is a lovely place to park and travel down and walk to White Rock. So we're worried about folks coming into the neighborhood that don't respect the nature of our community with people that walk, bike, hike, play, as well as...so driving through at faster speeds than we would like to see and itinerant parkers.
Just in terms of the roundabout at 8th Avenue and King George, just want to better understand, is that constantly backed up? I'm just trying to get some context in terms of use and utilization and what kind of issues that were faced at that corner.
It's a popular spot. It is a...there is regular traffic through there. Personally, I've lived in this...I'm in my fourth year in this neighborhood, and it is a...there is a lot of traffic that is going east, west, and north-south. I mean, it is a fundamental spot where people will go to White Rock to the border and east to the truck crossing.
So I just want to be really clear in terms of your concern. So are you concerned that there'd be a lot of southbound traffic on King George? They would be taking a right onto 10th Avenue, then they'd be taking an immediate left on 165A and then trying to get out on 8th Avenue?
I don't see runners coming from 10th Avenue so much as coming from White Rock.
From White Rock?
Yeah.
Okay, so you believe that they'd be driving north?
North, rather than south.
And they'd be taking that left into that new section of roadway?
Right.
Understood. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Gill, for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Next up, I have Danny Melnick.
Good evening, Mayor...or Madam Mayor and councilors. I'm here to speak from the point of view of the families that live in my community and the impact that creating this through road may have on our community and our kids. So my name is Danny Melnick, and I live at 883 165A Street, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My family recently moved to the South Meridian area from Alberta. We chose the area because of the wonderful elementary school, the quiet neighborhood, and how many families live in the area. We specifically chose 165A Street because it is a closed and looped-off road. We lived in a townhouse complex before, and my kids became very accustomed to being able to go outside and ride their bikes and run across the street and play with their friends. And while they know traffic safety, and I've taught them this, this is how they've grown up and what they've become accustomed to. So we wanted to keep that as a constant for them. Once we moved in, we discovered that in our community, we have a very rich and very family-oriented culture, and it's very unique. I actually thought we were going to be losing a lot of these things, moving from a townhouse complex into a single-family dwelling sort of neighborhood, but we found there's a...we have a block party every year, there's lots of kids, they all run across the street and play, we're out on our bikes riding, just like we used to do, and so it's actually been a very positive move for us, and we're very happy there. So I have two little boys, they're nine and seven years old. They like to play in the giant oak tree out front, I've mentioned that, and ride their bikes and everything. They can do this safely without me having to watch them constantly. I work from home, and in order for me to supervise them, I can't work. So for me to allow them to go play and do what they need to do, I can then get my work done, and we can remain a happy family. I grew up in South Surrey, so I understand the desire of being able to get around town quickly and find the shortcuts and know what those shortcuts are to get around the congestion. So my concern is that if we were to open up this 165 access from 8th Avenue, that, like me, people would then quickly realize that this is a way to get around that roundabout and the congestion that does build up there under the busy beachy days and during commuting times, because it is...it does get quite busy along that route when people are coming and going from work especially. That was...this was only 15 years ago, too. Obviously, our community has grown since then, the number of locals looking for those diversions has grown, as well as the congestion in town has made it much more desirable to get around town quickly. The other concern that I have with it is that we would then have strangers coming into our community. Right now, it's safe, we know everybody in our community, we can wave at our neighbors and know who's driving by and who's supposed to be there and who's not. So my concern would be that now we're going to have people that don't respect the community coming and going through without really knowing that there's families there and to watch out for the kids and the pets and all that. Another component that hasn't been mentioned yet is on our street on 165A, there's actually a narrowing of the road where there's a property that comes out, and it creates a blind spot for my neighbor who is directly south of that property, as well as myself, and it's already dangerous for us to come and go from our driveways if cars are coming. It's also narrow enough that if there's an oncoming vehicle, we need to pull over and allow those vehicles to go by. But again, it's usually our neighbor, we can wave hello, and it's not a big deal. If this was opened up to through traffic, this could be a very potential...has a lot of potential for hazard and accidents with us coming and going from our driveways, as well as having to stop and pull over and allow cars to come and go safely next to each other. So another concern, too, with the development, I accept that there will be development, I'm actually...I'm happy for it, because I'd love to see more families and kids come into our community. But it's going to disrupt us with the construction and the vehicles coming and going, the workers coming and going, and it's going to be a long time, and I accept that we will be disrupted that way. My concern is the long-term disruption with the traffic increase. So there's that. Trying to keep this brief for you guys. I guess in closing, really, our concern is that we just want to keep the culture of our community there, we want to keep it safe for our families. There's at least nine of us in the community with young kids that are out on the street and playing, not to mention all the grandkids that come and visit as well in our neighborhood. And so really, to be able to keep it closed off would allow us to remain safe. We have our new neighbors moving in, that's great. What we're really asking for is that if this frontage road does need to go through, that we keep it barricaded off, much like the bottom of 165A already is barricaded. It looks like it was developed to be able to go through, but we've been told that that's not going to happen now because of the roundabouts and the safety of coming and going from that access. So we feel that it would be a viable solution for us to ask for that barricade, to keep our loop closed off, but still allow access to and from the new homes going there, and to continue with the city's plan to have that frontage road going through. So it's really...those are the points that I'd like to make about that.
Counselor Gill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question to you is that in... Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question to you is that, in, in normal processes when we're doing applications, my understanding is that many times, we, we are always asking the, the applicant or the developer to, you know, complete the roadworks that are necessary to support the community. So, the question I have for you is that, that, you know, there is a cost associated to this road, and I'll look 10, 20, 30, 40 years in the future. So, the question is that, are you supportive of having this application move forward in the context of having the, the developer build out the balance of the roadwork that may be necessary in the, in the foreseeable future, at the same time, being able to restrict the traffic? I just want to better understand, are you just totally against the, the connection and against the works that would be required to support the, the, the application?
I accept that there will be a development going in there, I'm not against that. Like I said, I'd like to see more families come into the community. What I'm against is the increase in traffic. So, the frontage road is, if it must go in, that's the way it is, and, and I understand that. I just want to keep the traffic out of my community. That's my main concern.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, I, I feel like if we did allow the access, and the traffic would start coming through, then you'd, you'd see me again asking for speed bumps or some sort of traffic calming measures. So...
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Woods?
Madam Mayor, ma'am, I have your, your letter in front of me that you forwarded to us, the correspondence?
Mm-hmm, I, I did send an email, yeah.
Yes, and the second last paragraph relates to the old-growth trees.
Yeah, that is a concern of mine. My main concern is, of course, the, the traffic. I'd love to see the trees stay, but I understand the, the concept of living in a thriving, growing community.
Okay. Well, Counselor Gill just asked you questions with regards to the completion of the road, and I don't know whether you are aware, but there's a number of old-growth trees that were identified that are cedar, or not cedar, they're, they're Douglas fir, and there's an oak and grand fir, et cetera. They're all within the road allowance.
Yeah.
So, you, you would be in favor of removing those trees, putting the road allowance?
Well, I guess I'm picking my battles here. Honestly, I would rather see those trees stay and maybe a cul-de-sac go in, so there is no frontage road, with my wording of there being, if there must be a frontage road, we want it blocked off.
Well, there, okay. There is no must.
Okay, then, no, I don't want a frontage road.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
In a perfect world, yes. Thank you for your comments, Danny. Maria Staunton, Staunton?
Staunton, yes.
You're next, Maria.
Hello, Mayor Hepner and Counselors. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me, I appreciate it. We moved, and I, my name's Maria Staunton, I live at 890-165A Street, actually, right across from Danny, and her kids will come across the street and knock on the door and want to play. So, yes, there are kids doing that. We moved to this area back in 2003. We bought our house because it is a non-through road. To have more traffic in the neighborhood would be dangerous. We have trained our kids, age 14, she is not here, age 12, and age 9. I have only recently allowed him to start running around the block, and they have been trained, because there is a non-through road, not to stop at that stop sign, but to go around on their bikes. So, if it became a non-through road, I could see one of them forgetting, and possibly getting hit by a car. They have been trained since they were in tricycles to go on the right side of the road, right where that barrier is right now, and like, where all the narrowing is. And so, I do object to the proposal of it being a through road, and I thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
Okay.
No questions?
No questions.
You were very clear, thank you.
Thank you.
Hugh Roth is up next.
Good evening, Mayor, and, and Mayor Hepner and Counselors. Thank you for listening to me tonight. I'm owner-resident of 165719A, which is a little short street with two houses on it, which connects 165A and 166. I'm opposed to this development proposal for a few reasons, but I'm just centering on basically one. I'm the captain of Block Watch in this area, in the neighborhood. We have 51 households in our Block Watch, including members from 165A Street, the 8th Frontage Avenue, 166A Street, 9A Avenue, 10th Avenue. Forty-three, in other words, approximately 84% of these households are opposed to this proposal, partly for the through-road aspect, bringing extra-vehicle traffic. This will affect the safety in our area, as others are addressing. In addition, there's another advantage to having only one vehicle entrance and exit to our neighborhood. This means that if there is any criminal activity in our loop, then they could be trapped with only one way out. This makes the no-through, no-through road a deterrent to these criminals. Please consider these safety issues in making your decision. There have been a couple of instances where people have had trouble. I mean, you come in, if you come into 165A off 10th, there is a no-through sign, which deters criminals perhaps, there's a Block Watch sign, which also would deter them. But there have been a couple of situations where they've got trapped in there. And they've never actually been, the police, I don't think have ever any, apprehended anyone, but it's, it's, does make it, that's a possibility. So, anyway, thank you for listening to me, and please consider what I have to say. Thank you.
And thank you, sir, for your comments tonight, as well as your service to our Block Watch program. We value you very much, so appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
And Jan Emsley is next.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Counselors. Thank you for listening. I'm, I have, I'm living at 893-165A Street, and I am the neighbor beside Danny, who has the problem getting out of my driveway with the small choke point that we have on 165A. But I'm up here today to tell you that I have lived on the street for 26 years. I moved from 165 right behind, and the reason I did that was because I then had two children, one and three years old, and the street even then, on 165, was busy. And so, I thought, okay, I'm going to have my house built behind me, because I love this area, and it's a closed loop, so I know that my children are going to be safe on that street. So, I raise them with that feeling. And I think I have to add that the community within our group, our streets, is such a wonderful community, and somebody's already mentioned, we have Block Watches, we have, we have block parties, we have, we had a beautiful birthday party for a child, I guess it was about two weeks ago now, three weeks ago now, where the street was blocked off, we had a sign up saying, "Kids that play," and they were all over the street. There must have been 30 kids just playing and having fun. And that's what we want, you know? We're trying to get away from technology, we're trying to get our kids outside and doing things, and this is the way to do it, and this is the way to build our community. So, my objection is to the through road. I have some great concerns about the traffic increase coming up our street, not only from the perspective of the increase in the number of cars, but the speed with which that could happen. You know, occasionally, we don't have fast cars go down our street, because people know each other. The other thing that, that I would like to mention is, we also have a lot of elderly people in our community, and they like to walk. They like to walk their dogs, they like to walk with their walkers, they're pushed with wheelchairs, and on occasion, if you come up behind them with your car, they don't always hear you. So, the concern, again, is for that safety of those elderly people who could come out onto the street with the increase in traffic, again. So, the objection is basically the through road. I am very concerned about those beautiful big cedar, big firs. They are gorgeous, and I would like those to remain, if at all possible.
Counselor, my glass is back on. Woods?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I wonder if staff can just put Cosmos back up, please? Just for everybody's information, this is another neighbor that we met with, and I wonder if you could just pull out a little bit? Nope, yeah, great, thanks. Okay, you're, madam, you can see there, there's a big chunk north, there's a big house there, and there, there's trees, et cetera, in that big yard. I wonder if the city staff can just put their, their pen on the first house to the south?
The second chunk, wait.
For a little hand. Just want to understand, ma'am, where your house is?
Uh-huh.
There, there's your house right there, is that correct?
Yeah, my house is right there.
Right. So, you can see to the north there, there's a, there's some private property, and the road, 165A, is already a pinched road.
Yes.
And that is the one that, I believe, the previous speaker, Ms. Melnick, referred to, backing out, et cetera. When there's somebody comes from the north, you have to be very careful when you're backing out.
Yes.
So, that road has already got problems on it. Somewhere down the line, that road would have to be reconfigured, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that, how many cars can go right now in that pinch point? Could two cars pass?
One, one at a time, unless they are two small cars, and then you could probably get through.
So, two small cars could get through?
Yeah.
Okay.
But very tight.
Right. So, my, my point, and I just want to get a clarifying there, because no one's talked about that so far. Is that a concern of yours?
Mine? Yes, definitely.
Okay, very good.
But that is also where we have our Block Watch, our Block Party, right in front of that little crescent there. We have our Block Party, and it's a great spot.
Okay, well, I don't think we can quite get into the Block Party part, but I'm getting in terms of like, ta, traffic flow.
Yeah.
Just so that I understand, that, and, you know, I can appreciate the fact that the city's trying to straighten that out, but there's already problems in there?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. And thank you very much for your comments, Jans, for listening. Sean Smith is up next.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks very much for hearing my voice, and as I haven't spoken to you guys in a long time, thank you very much for your stewardship in the development of Surrey from the last time that I spoke.
Could you just move that mic up a little bit? You're a little too tall, sir.
Sorry, no problem. There we go.
Thank you.
I'm a longtime resident of Surrey, but more directly, my purpose for speaking here is for the actual ownership of the property, which is in question, that the application's being put forth on. So, 165378th Avenue, and I'm here on direct behalf of Fred Kenezovich and Joyce Eastland, who are the titled owners of the property. Madam Mayor and Council, this is a long time held within the family, as a matter of fact, multi-generational ownership of this property, and coincidentally, or maybe the more appropriate word would be paradoxically, three of the speakers who have spoken tonight in opposition to this further development actually live on portions of the land which the Kenezovitches had previously subdivided in the past, obviously with the exception of the remaining property, which we're here to speak on the remaining layout of. So, while we've got Cosmos up on there, I just thought, no one's brought it up so far before I go anywhere forward on it, but when we look at this map and look at the, I'll call it, remaining, yet-to-be-developed parcels, when we talk roadways, something that no one else has addressed is what the likely future of these roadways will be. And when I'm looking at it, and I look at the adjoining 8th Ave, FGN North Road, that currently connects 164A and 165 Street, you can see an 8A Avenue off to what would be the west side of that. And predictably, I would suggest that it will probably go forward at one point in time to connect with 164th Street. I may be incorrect. And then, the other roadway which Counselor Woods was just referring to, which is that elongated stretch of property that fronts onto 10th Avenue, and has a, a eastern border with 165A down at the bottom, which has, has been blocking, I guess, or providing a blindside for a few of the neighbors that was mentioned as well. And I think Counselor Woods is quite correct in that that road may be not realigned, but will certainly be addressed with future potential development. And I think the big issue with this property that, that hasn't been spoken of so far is that it, it was intended, I'm sure, a long time ago during, when this subdivision plan was conceived and reviewed and shaped with the, the city's input previously, is that this 8th Avenue, FGN, has always intended to go through, and no one has ever demanded it go through. Obviously, it, it can't unless this property develops. And now that the ownership group has decided to work with the applicant, we feel that it would be fantastic for the neighborhood, despite some of the objections, for this road to go through, to actually achieve what was originally conceived, and to allow this one-acre piece to become six RF in conjunction with the, the rest of the neighborhood, in terms of the shape of the lots and the size of the homes that will go on it. And, and they're quite, the Kenezovitches and Mrs. Eastland are quite happy to see it go forward with the development, and to, to complete the neighborhood. When we talk about, or when, when this process began, and these got, the ownership group was looking to work with an applicant to develop the property, they were very vigilant, and upon engineering request, had actually consulted, and if you can't tell already, I didn't say it, but I'm obviously for the, the application that's been put ahead of you. We did a survey, all of the adjacent fronting properties to what would be created in this new six-lot subdivision. So, 859 to the north of this property, and then all of the opposing roads, and if my eyesight's correct, I'm looking at 818, actually, I've wrote it down here, so it'll be easier to say, 859, 850, 842, 826, and 818, all of 165A, which, when introduced to the project, both having the six lots and the road being completed to be able to purposely provide frontage for those newly-created lots, and to be able to complete the road networks, we're all in agreeance. road networks, were all in agreeance in terms of this road being put forward. The only person that would be included in that group that didn't, upon being requested, I think a total of seven times is what I've documented, never ever responded. So all of those people who were across the fronting road were all for this project. I think probably a long time ago, when this was originally master planned, and I see Mr. Lawnd received a twenty-year reward, so even long before his time, and most of the mayor and councils, this was supposed to be a completed community. And the main thing is, part of applications, there's a tremendous amount of work put in from city staff, both in engineering and planning, to really look at the process and the effect that these subdivisions will have on the neighborhood. And I'm sure that those have been addressed. I know that the Ministry of Transport Infrastructure is, on the preliminary basis, said, yeah, everything's good. I guess I would disagree with Mr. Gill and his group, not Counselor Gill, but Mr. Gill who spoke previously, that this will create a dangerous neighborhood in any sense of the imagination if you, and don't need to do it, but just mentally zoom out, Cosmos, and look at the other roadways. It's very unique. I will agree with the applicants that there is a looped road, but certainly I would think, especially for those people that recently moved into the neighborhood, when you look down 165A, it's, I would think very clear that eventually this roadway is going to be finished off and accommodate the width which it was originally designed to do for a safety So, yeah, I guess overall, we would just, as the owners of the property and longtime owners of the property, we would just help to urge the sensibility of the council and Madam Mayor to finish off and fulfill what had originally been conceived by the city to be an overall neighborhood concept plan. And that's all for me, so I'm almost for it.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Appreciate it.
No problem.
And next up, I have Sheila Vitellier.
My name is Sheila Vitaki, V for Victor, A T for Tom, A-I-K-I. And I live at 957 165A Street. I am glad that Shaun mentioned what happens when people who are new to the neighborhood, what they think when they look down 165A, because I've been in my property for a year this month. So I am one of those new people. And I came from a cul-de-sac in Richmond. And when my husband and I made the decision to purchase the property that we purchased, we drove around the neighborhood and we noticed the character of the neighborhood and we purchased because it's in fact a loop. Interestingly, we did meet, let me just say that it is such a privilege to live in this neighborhood. You'll see my neighbors and you'll see the demographic of our neighborhood. You've had our neighbors speak to you. We have a demographic that goes from young families with very young children to families like myself with adult children, some of whom still live at home, and to octogenarians who live in some of the rancher-style one-floor homes. And I'm a physiotherapist by training. I've worked in many different incarnations, but one of those is in rehabilitation at Holy Family Hospital with geriatric patients. And for those of you who are familiar with geriatric health needs, we want to keep our elders in their homes as long as possible. And a community like this lets that happen because we care for each other, we're aware of each other, and this sort of traffic pattern protects our elder neighbors, enabling them to be able to walk in the neighborhood and have those of us who are around keep a watchful eye on them. We are speaking to you about a number of different concerns, but our two primary concerns, as you will have heard, are relative to this traffic pattern change and to the old growth trees that we see. I was very heartened. I want you to know that this is my first experience speaking before city council and I'm a new resident to Surrey, so I'm somewhat familiar with what happens in Richmond politics, but I wasn't sure when I came to Surrey. This has been an amazing process for me and I want you to know, you do have amazing staff working for you. We've become, many of us have become pen pals with Junior Planner Adam Rossi. We've met with Jeff, I think it's Jeff Pang, from your traffic engineering department and with Shaun himself on Friday. Your staff have availed themselves to us for answering our questions and considering our concerns. And so we've had very in-depth discussions. We've also met with the developer and with Mike Comp, I'm going to get your name wrong, Mike, but with Mike and with Paul Wan and TJ, with many of the invested stakeholders in this process to try and get this thing figured out and to try and figure out what the problems are and see if there's any way that we can address what our biggest issues are. And I've been amazed at the response of councils. So to have Dave Woods come and to have Vera come to our neighborhood and other councilors, I think Judy and Bruce drove through the neighborhood and others responded to emails that we've written. Your clerks respond instantaneously when we send correspondence. This has been an amazing process and we hope that this responsiveness and consideration will continue. Because what you see is, Hugh mentioned, there are fifty-four homes in our neighborhood on the 165A Street. I'm not sure the process, but this letter is actually from one of my neighbors on the 165 side. And she came tonight, but she doesn't want to speak to the letter. But is it too late to have this letter received?
Will receive.
Will receive.
Thank you, second.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor, both carry.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we really just, I'm not going to belabor the point. I think you understand our issues. Our primary concerns are the continuance of that frontage road. And although, yes, it was part of the city plan thirty years ago, I've made a lot of plans thirty years ago that have not come to fruition in my life and I've changed some of them. And even though there are principles for city planning and for transportation planning around making connections from here to there and making things go in certain directions, we ask that you reconsider those. So at the very least, that the council would take this proposal back and review it with consideration for the things that we've raised about traffic concerns in our neighborhood and also with consideration for the incredible old growth trees and the impact that that would have. If you look at the, I don't know what it was called, but that Cosmos view, you'll see that in this neighborhood, there isn't a lot of green space. The green space that remains in this portion of the neighborhood is actually undeveloped lots. So this particular lot which is undeveloped, my house actually backs onto the other undeveloped lot that Counselor Woods pointed out. And actually, we feel like we live in a forest because there are old growth trees right behind us, which we love. And then the two, when Shaun was speaking about the completion of 8A onto 164th, the thing that's stopping that from happening is two other undeveloped lots. So we don't know when any of those things are going to happen. We understand that there is progress, there is development, but we really hope that there's some way that the development could continue and protect those trees, hopefully, possibly, if not to replace them, for example. My understanding is, and this confused me, there are rules about how many trees people have to replace, but Vera helped me understand this, that, so you cut down, in this proposal, there's something like eighty-six trees that are going to be cut down in the Arborist report. And yet, there's rules around how many trees a builder can put on a particular-sized lot. So Mike and the developers helped us understand that it's like something like three trees per lot that they can put back. And we'd like you to consider, we understand there might be some flexibility around that, so they're taking down eighty-six in the proposal, but there's only eighteen going back in because of that, I think it's a bylaw. And so, but I understand from talking to some of your staff that there might be some flexibility around maybe retaining more trees or having other trees put in. And we know that the developers are prepared to put more trees in or try to retain trees because we've had some really good conversations with them. So I'm not going to belabor it, even though I promised I wouldn't before, and then I did for a little bit longer, but I just want to thank you very much for your serious consideration.
Some questions. Counselor Gill?
Yes, Counsel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for your thoughtful comments. I'm really just trying to understand your priorities.
Yes.
And then really actually understand what priority is a bigger priority. Is the bigger priority the trees or is the bigger priority ensuring that that access is not going through in terms of 8th Avenue North?
Do I have to make a choice?
No, I think that we have to make a choice later on tonight. And for me to better understand your thoughtfulness in terms of this particular issue, I think it's been really clear tonight, I think that we hear very loud and clear in terms of what the community has said. I think one of the things, just being chair of finance, is that I don't want the city to be in a position where we as a city would have to pay for a road in the foreseeable future, given that generally in these kind of applications, the applicant is responsible for those kind of works. So I don't mean it to be a loaded question, but I just really did want to understand, you know, what was more important to you in terms of the access or the trees or both? It's fine for you to say both if in fact that's the case.
Well, I think the thing for me is, I'm not sure if there has been full and careful due consideration to the concept of the frontage road with an understanding of the impact on the neighborhood. I believe that you have excellent staff and you are seasoned veterans. When I was amazed when I started reading your portfolios and your profiles online, the number of cumulative years of service that are represented right here in this room, I bet you'd make these kind of decisions all the time. So I don't propose to tell you that one is a priority over the other. Of course, I want both, but isn't there some way that we could do some combination that would give us both? If I had to pick, I would, I love my neighbors too much to pick.
I appreciate the challenge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments this evening.
Thank you very much.
That concludes the number of listed speakers I have. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number three? Okay, sir, at the back.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Matt Creach. I live on 165th Street, 184 as civic address. There's a few which I sent an email to the city clerk this afternoon, a few things that I'll bring up now which are not included, are concerns about potential rental suites going into this area. I'm not aware if there's anything that, if anything's been tabled or if it's too early to tell at this stage.
All single-family homes in the city of Surrey are allowed to have a suite, every single one.
Yeah, so there are concerns about extra parking and everything else that comes along with having tenants on a property. I'm not opposed to development. When my wife and I moved into the area three years ago, we were told by our agent that it's an estate development, it's going to happen. I've got twenty years of experience in construction industry. I get it. I know it's going to happen. And really, I'm okay with it and so is my wife. It's progress, it's moving forward. However, it can be done responsibly. And after seeing the schedule for the tree removal, I don't want to say that I'm a tree hugger, but we all have an obligation to the community. And even the Ministry of the Environment from the federal government has guidelines stated for municipalities to follow. I won't quote you all of them tonight, but it does go to the extent of saying that you have to protect where endangered animals are or protected animals are roosting, using areas to roost. Now, I get the logistics of development and clear-cutting everything and removing is a lot easier for developer and in construction. I can tell you, yeah, it's a little bit easier to do that. It's not difficult and it's not impossible to leave some of these trees in place. And case in point, you can look at the proposed property lines and you have trees 322 and 323, some of the old growth firs, they're on the property line. That doesn't, that makes it so incredibly easy to leave those trees and to continue on with the development. It's a no-brainer, in my opinion, and it lets you guys, you know, you look pretty good, you're saving the trees. And I can tell you actively that there are eagles that roost in these trees annually all the time. Up the way by the new superstore, you got eagles nesting there and they migrate down to nest in these trees. And once in a while, they pick the salmono that runs through the Campbell Valley, Little Campbell River, sorry, just that runs to the Sami Amian Reserve. The trees, there's more trees on the south side that approach the new frontage road. I think with some clever planning, you could make something actually really feasible there and continue on with the frontage road. I'm not opposed to the frontage road on conditions that it gets blocked with something as simple as no post-barriers and that if in the future, with the current community plan, that 8A does continue to go through, one would only assume then that the access from Marine Drive 8th Avenue onto 8th Frontage would then be closed off, eliminating the fact and the concern of rat racers and that coming through the loop and, which I can tell you, 165th Street, my cul-de-sac in the middle there, three vehicles a day we get traveling above fifty kilometers an hour. That's one block. People come up to, they see the roundabout, I think Counselor Gill brought it up earlier, wondering if the traffic does back up. It does. I don't know if you've ever been down to White Rock on a Saturday and tried to get out of there at seven o'clock? It's a nightmare and people rip up that street, to the point now, I keep a tennis ball in my pocket when I'm doing yard work and I bounce it out across the street when people do the Uwe in the cul-de-sac. And when their tires are screeching, they're going too fast. It's a fact. And the frontage, I get it. You have to do it. The homeowners are entitled to develop their six lots that they want. They're entitled to that. I totally get it. The simple solution? No post-barriers. They get to keep the loop and it eliminates any extra traffic potentially coming up my street. That really is, is it for me? Unless you want me to start quoting the Ministry of Environment, so.
Thanks a lot for your comments, yes. I think there was a gentleman here, yes. Good evening.
Thank you very much. My name's Brian Robertson. I live at 888 165th Street. I apologize for not signing up before. I thank my neighbor's very eloquent arguments and discussion of the traffic in the neighborhood and the forest. I've lived in the neighborhood for twenty years. It's a great neighborhood. The particular concern that I wanted to bring forward has to do with the trees. They really are beautiful, large trees. One of the few areas of the neighborhood where those trees live are still around, as you can see from the aerial photography shown earlier. It seems to me too that I'm not, being on 165, having been, I'm not as concerned with the frontage road because its impact on us would be less. I understand the concerns and I actually agree with them quite strongly. It's also interesting, as Counselor Woods observed, and as I was coming here, I took some pictures, a lot of the trees in fact are in the area where the frontage road would go through, a lot of the big trees. And it seems like, I'm a person of compromise, development, the neighborhood's great, I think having other single-family dwellings coming in, interesting observation too about where the trees are at property lines. I haven't heard anybody say they don't want houses with respect to the developers and the family. Absolutely, having more families coming into our neighborhood is fantastic. I think there's some opportunity for compromise where perhaps we look at the development, what they want, what the people in the neighborhood want in terms of access and to continue to keep some of the trees because I've been quite on top of some of the environmental concerns and issues we've had in South Surrey. There's been a number of developments, I think they're quite French center in terms of trees would just come, rip down all the trees. Actually, as I look across the peninsula and see historically how developments have come in amongst the trees, I think there's actually an interesting opportunity here for us to perhaps compromise and ask the council to consider that.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you very much for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing, okay, ma'am, come forward.
My name is Alita Andrew and my husband and I moved to 923 166th Street about five and a half years ago. I just wanted to add a couple of comments. I think all of our neighbors have spoken quite well about the concerns. My concern is that, I don't know why we're so concerned about the need for this 8th Avenue North, the frontage road to go through. I understand that, you know, 29 years ago when the properties were developed, that there was a plan for it to go through. But as I'm looking at this map right now, I'm seeing King George Boulevard is clearly a through road and, you know, everybody in Surrey knows King George Boulevard, you can travel all the way down, get to the 8th Avenue Roundabout and very quickly get to White Rock or to the eastern part of Surrey. You can also travel directly through from 164th Street, which leads from King George directly down to 8th Avenue. And you can also travel through from 160th Street directly through. So, within a few blocks of our development, there are at least three through roads that are clear, they're well-marked, they've got stop signs, they're well-controlled. So, the need for an additional route, which would be what the 8th Avenue frontage road would result in, is irrelevant. I mean, why would you have to have an additional road when you've got 166, sorry, King George, which is right there, which is literally feet away, which is a through road? So, why the need for another through road from 10th to 8th? It, you know, it's redundant from what I'm seeing. And that's really what my comment is. So, I'm wondering if the need for the continuation of that 8th Avenue frontage road is just for the need for an additional lot, i.e. six lots developed instead of five? If there's five lots, do you really need to complete that 8th Avenue frontage road? Those are my comments.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, ma'am, and anyone after this lady?
Mike.
Two, okay. Mike, you'll be the last speaker then. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Stacy Markle, I live at 878 165th Street. And I just wanted to express that it's not just the people who live on the Loop, as we'll call it, who use the Loop. I have a nine-year-old and a six-year-old, we moved to the area six years ago. Both of my children learn how to ride their bikes in the Loop. We went to that street because it's safe. There's a green space between 166 and King George Boulevard that my family often uses to play on. My children, my dog, my husband and I will go there and kick a soccer ball around and that's going to change for us if we have to be worried about the traffic. And it really is a special place, but like I said, I just want to make it clear that it's not just the people living on the Loop who are benefiting from it. Also, right now, when I look out of my kitchen window, I see the tops of the trees on this property, we see the eagles landing, we see birds, we see deer crossing the street. I understand that the development's going to come, but it is coming at a cost. And I'm tired of driving around Surrey with my children and having to comfort them when they go past large lots, acreages where trees are just mowed down. And I'm tired of it. And I'm tired of this tonight, there are so many people in the neighborhood who want it to stay the way that it is and it feels like so much is going to be changed for six people or six families that are coming. So, I would ask you to think about the people that are already there and what we want. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Mike Comter, 12992 76th Avenue, Surrey, B.C. I'm the agent for the project. The client, Mr. Kavon Desi and Tiju Samra came to my office and they came to discuss what we could do with this property in terms of development. So, we discussed options that could, we looked at reviewing options, met with the city staff and in the end it was decided to create single-family lots in keeping with the neighborhood. So, we're keeping the same land use, same zoning that currently exists within the neighborhood. It is an infill property, it's as noted. The developer or the owner of the property originally, as Mr. Sean mentioned earlier, did canvass the six adjacent properties to the development, of which five did respond in a supportive way. So, at the time, we didn't get very much in terms of negative response at that time. So, in discussion with the city, it was indicated that they wanted 8th Avenue frontage road to be connected through, as was mentioned by all the speakers here tonight in opposition. So, originally, we had six lots without the frontage road, with the frontage road, we still have six lots that meet the zoning bylaw, but they are a bit smaller lots.
So, just for clarification, you could do the six lots without the frontage road?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. So, with this configuration, it creates a bit of an odd-shaped lots on some of the lots, so to keep them regular and rectangular, we made an application tonight for a slight relaxation on the depth of two of the lots so that the lot lines all stay rectangular. And that's the request for the DVP for the efficient use of land. So, recently, the city informed me of concerns being raised by the neighborhood. Once notified, we reached out to the neighborhood and met with four of the neighbors. We met at Hubbs' office with the developer, Mr. Kavon Desi, Tiju Samra, met with Dave, Sheila, Hugh and Terry, three of which spoke tonight. We discussed the project, we explained the project to the owners. They had indicated to us that they had reviewed the documents quite intensely. We did discuss the character study, building guidelines, Arbus report, the road network and traffic concerns. So, first I just want to say it's readily apparent from our discussion with these four neighbors that they're a close-knit community, they know their neighbors, they enjoy being in their neighborhood, it's a family-oriented neighborhood and obviously they're concerned about their neighborhood. They're well-spoken, polite, yet concerned about the potential impact of the development of their neighborhood. So, at our initial meeting, we informed the group that the proposed development is not proposing a different land use. Proposed lots, zoning will be the same as what the zoning currently is, which is single-family lots. The discussion also went into the character study and building guidelines, which they indicated they reviewed. They indicated they had no concerns with them, but they were concerned about enforcement of the guidelines. We indicated to them that these documents, along with the Arbus report, would be registered on title and enforced on any proposed building on every lot that's being proposed. The discussion turned to the trees and we looked at the trees. So, maybe if we can put up the tree plan. So, it's readily apparent and noted by the residents that the better trees are situated down the perimeter of the property. So, this is one of these properties, at one time, when it was a large parcel, whoever bought the property originally built a house, took all the trees down in the middle, left all the larger trees on the outside perimeter. So, what we have now is the perimeter has the large trees. Inside the lots, they're all alders for the most part, except for the circles that you see on the drawing. So, on the east side, we're 165 A Street, currently half-road standard. City will require it to be widened to full-road standard, so we get rid of the pinch point at the, where the property currently ends at the north end. And unfortunately, you can see all the circles adjacent to the road are basically where the pavement, asphalt pavement is. And even in today's standards, the existing road that there is now, those trees will all be removed because their root zones extend under the existing asphalt. So, any maintenance the city crews have to do today, we'll have to take down those trees to get at any of the sewers that currently exist under the road. Similar to the trees along the south side where 8th Avenue frontage road would go, those trees are all, would all be impacted by the asphalt. You can see on the bottom-left corner of the drawing where there's a bit of a square rectangle, that's where the current asphalt ends with the sidewalk. That alignment would be carried through to tie into, and unfortunately it doesn't show the asphalt, the asphalt on the east side of the drawing, but the road line would carry on through that corridor. The intent is to retain all the trees along the west perimeter, north perimeter of the So, the retainable trees are being retained, the ones that have to be removed are for road purposes.
A question from Councilor Woods.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I was going to wait till Mike was finished, but if it's all right, can I answer the question now?
Ask him.
Yes. Sir, just talking about the trees on the east side specifically, you've got the Arbus report there, I'm talking about tree 100, 320, 102 and 324. These trees are significant trees. They're, you know, they're, quite frankly, they're beautiful trees. It pains me that we're even considering taking them down and, but, my question to you is your original proposal to the city, because you adjusted the proposal, correct? You went with one proposal and you met with planners and then you came back with another proposal?
Correct.
Your original proposal to the city, did it include saving any of the trees along the east side and also three trees on the south side, specifically 305, 327 and 326?
No, in either instance, those trees would be removed.
Under your original proposal?
Yes, correct.
And the rationale for that is because of the root system that's going under the existing asphalt?
Along the east side, it would be the root system, as you can see the circles are all running under the asphalt on the east side. On the south side, it's the similar impact of if it's a road or driveway network, those trees are far too large to save. You can see the circles are huge.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam.
Thank you. Okay.
So, the biggest concern the neighborhood had at our initial meeting is about the road network and traffic, which again was expressed tonight. The neighborhood indicated some of them were aware that the intent of the city is to extend 8th Avenue frontage road through the subject property and this concerns them obviously. They indicated their concern with rat running through the neighborhood, particularly that when, as was mentioned, if drivers get wind of the fact that they can bypass 8th Avenue by rat running through the neighborhood. So, after a lengthy discussion, we discussed what they preferred. They indicated not extending 8th Avenue Road frontage. I mentioned this would create concerns by city transportation staff as this would resolve or result in a permanent single access to the neighborhood, while secondary accesses are preferred for emergency vehicle purposes. We then discussed an option of putting a gate across the current 8th Avenue access once the 8th Avenue frontage road is constructed through. This appeared to me with some favor, except one member raised the issue of, well, the city can take the gate, open the gate at any time, which I guess is something that could happen. So, I did mention that I didn't think the city had plans to retain the access to 8th Avenue long-term, but that's something that is obviously up to the city. We adjourned the meeting on a pleasant note, was in agreement to meet again. We then met again at City Hall with city staff and five of the neighbors showed up at this meeting, the same four, and Jan was the fifth participant at this meeting. The focus is on two issues, again, the same two issues, trees and the road network. At this meeting, the neighbors felt additional trees should be planted on the lots. We had a discussion with staff and mentioned that we were putting on the maximum number of replant trees that the city requires, so we had discussion with staff in terms of increasing that number of trees that could be planted on the property. And then, again, the developer's willing to do that. At this meeting with the city staff, it was indicated that 8th Avenue Road frontage was always in the plan and would be required. In addition, it was indicated that 8A Avenue would eventually be connected through, as one of the speakers mentioned tonight, so 8A Avenue would be the connector from 164th Street to 164 A Street, and that would provide the secondary access into the neighborhood. So, the discussion turned to rat running again at this meeting, that was the neighbor's big concern. So, they wanted to, they asked if they could have a barrier, if the 8th Avenue frontage road was going to be constructed, they'd asked that a barrier be placed either on 8th Avenue or between the two neighborhoods. So, I think there's an opportunity here for council to address the neighborhood's concerns. I mean, gates and barricades are not ideal solutions, but in this case, may solve the neighborhood's concerns. The traffic dynamics will not change from what they are today, but it will allow the neighborhood to enjoy their current lifestyle until 8A Avenue is built from 164 to 164 A Street. So, my client, he's asking for council to move this project forward with the due consideration to some kind of gate or barricade as an option for this project. In regards to the trees, as mentioned, the developer is willing to plant additional trees to improve the tree canopy for the project.
Thanks, Mr. Comter. Councilor Gill has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mike, just in terms of this particular project, did you engage the community through any public information meeting at all?
No, we didn't know of any concerns, as I mentioned, until just recently. And so, when we did hear of the concerns from the neighborhood, we went out and met with the four, we met with four individuals at our office. At that stage, we talked about their concerns and meeting, I thought, left off quite well and then we did agree to meet again at the City Hall. Those are the two meetings that we had.
Just in terms of the alternative layout, may I assume that when I'm looking at the proposed layout, had you originally proposed lots five and six being orientated the same way that lots one and four were previously oriented or currently oriented? Was that one of the proposed layouts that you might have had for your client or for...
Yes, the original layout was the assumption that 8A Avenue North, frontage road North, did not go through, so we just utilized the entire property.
Just in terms of the access to the site, was there any assessments done that one single access point could support the community? Was there any concerns in terms of ambulance and fire being able to access the site appropriately if we were to keep a single access point for this particular development?
Well, I think that's the city's concern, city staff's, transportation's concern is secondary access for emergency vehicle purposes. It is a single access to the neighborhood. If this property develops without secondary access, you could provide an emergency access along 165 A Street to 8th Avenue, it would be closed off as an alternate, not ideal again. If the other secondary property does develop, I don't see a road going through that particular property, just physically doesn't have the land to do that, so there isn't many options now.
My final question, just in terms of this application, did you or your client offer any cash and loon sense of, you know, the city could take care of the situation in the future and provide the funds necessary to complete any construction works that may possibly be required in the future, is that a discussion that you had with either the staff or the community?
That's not something that would come up at this stage, no.
Thank you.
Councilor Hayne?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Did you at any time have a look at, as you were looking at the frontage road access, if it weren't to be put through, but the roadworks were done and barricades were put in place and bollards and that sort of thing, is there any width there to be able to provide emergency access to emergency vehicles and retain any of those significant dug firs?
We could.
I know that's a hypothetical, but...
Yes, we probably could, it would just mean a non-standard road. It wouldn't be the ultimate configuration. Any ultimate configuration of road would require those trees to be removed. And as well, if and when the city does, why... And as well, if, if and when the city does widen Eighth Avenue, it would also then take out those trees.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
That concludes bylaw number three this evening. Madam Clerk, bylaw four, please.
Zoning amendment bylaw 19304, the address is 8245 170 A Street. The applicant is Jas Wanton Colbrunt Brar. The applicants are seeking to rezone the property from half-acre residential to comprehensive development. Applicants proposing to subdivide the property into two small suburban single lots.
On table, we have four letters, or three letters, rather, in opposition to this application. I have no one signed up to speak to the application, nor anyone who has signed up not wishing to speak. Is there anyone wishing to comment on bylaw four this evening? Bylaw four, my last call. Madam Clerk, bylaw number five.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 19305, the address is 14987 768 Avenue. The applicants are Grevender and Jas Diprare. The applicants are seeking to rezone the property from half-acre residential to single-family residential. The applicants are proposing to subdivide the property into two single-family lots. The existing house is to be retained on proposed lot one.
And we have no correspondence on this application, nor anyone wishing to speak to it. Is there anyone wishing to comment on bylaw five this evening? Last call on bylaw, on bylaw five, which is also the last bylaw of the evening. Okay, moving on. Committee reports, councilors, social policy advisory.
I'll move the minutes to be received and the recommendations adopted.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes of the Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee of May 31st, 2017, to be received.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes of the Agriculture Food Security Advisory Committee of June 1st, 2017, minutes to be received.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And I have only one proclamation this evening, that is for Drowning Prevention Week, July 16 through 22, whereas basic swimming ability is a fundamental requirement toward eliminating drowning fatalities, and whereas the city of Surrey, along with the B.C. Yukon Life Saving Society and the Canadian Red Cross, has partnered to promote safe swimming skills and water safety through swim lessons and the Swim to Survive program, whereas the city of Surrey endorses the need to reduce the risk of drowning within our communities and the province. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare July 16 through 22 as Drowning Prevention Week in the city of Surrey, and urge all citizens to take safeguards when engaging in water recreation activities. Moving on, councilors, to corporate reports.
Move corporate part R140, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Building an Oclusive and Green Municipalities in South Africa for the term of 2017 to 2020.
Second.
All those in... Okay, it's on table, Counselor Steele.
Thank you. I just want to quickly commend staff for getting involved in this. I sit on the International Committee at FCM, and the work that we're able to help them with in other countries is absolutely amazing, and it, FCM is so appreciative, as am I, and I'm sure we all are, of their ability to step in and provide a lot of work. Also, I would say that Mr. Lalland has indicated that we have a lot to learn from them, and we will benefit greatly from this, so I commend you very much, and thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Villanouf.
Thank you. I just wanted some clarification on the funding of the project, and is it my understanding that most of the funding will be through the FCM for staff to be able to do the exchanges, and that we host people from South Africa here? Could you explain a little bit about how that works, in contrast to sister cities, et cetera?
Madam Mayor, to Counselor Villanouf, the majority of the funding for the project comes from the federal government, and then contracts out with FCM. This commitment is, if we're so chosen, so it's to support an application to be chosen as one of the cities to participate. When staff would go exchange their expertise, that would be the city's contribution those two weeks, for example.
Okay.
And then, but that's the extent of the, of the commitment, and then also hosting them, we wouldn't charge back for hosting delegations that come to the city of Surrey.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, and thank you, that's carried.
Move corporate part R141, award of contract for the supply of two tandem axle dump trucks with winter maintenance equipment for an amount of $811,294.40 to the First Truck Center of Vancouver Inc.
All those in favor, opposed, and we now are going to own two new dump trucks, carried.
Move corporate part R142, award of contract for the supply of eight compressed natural gas field trucks from Ford Lincoln Limited in the amount of $773,366.56.
Second. Counselor, it's on table, Counselor Starchuk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have to support this in a, in a great way, in the sense that we're moving down our own path for renewable natural gas, but I have a question when it comes to the RFQ process and looking at multiple years as opposed to a year by year, so that should we be considering, you know, planning out the next two or three or four years, and whether or not there would be a better so-called bargain for the, the upcoming years?
Counselor Starchuk, through Madam Mayor. That's a possibility that we've looked at, we consider that in our future expansion of, of the fleet. For this particular, we were following through on a practice that we had done in the past. We certainly consider that.
Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried with consideration for Counselor Starchuk's comments for future RFPs.
Move corporate part R143, award of contract for the 2017 pavement cut services to Grand View Plac Top Limited in the amount of $681,018.66.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate part R144, award of contract for material screening and filling operations at Stokes Pit in the amount of $2,991,000, and that's to be recovered through SCDC in the future.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate part R145, 105th Avenue Quarter Project and Hawthorne Roadie Park Master Plan Public Consultation Report.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
Move corporate part R146, amendments to the Surrey Officer and Adamification bylaw delegation.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move corporate part R147, award of contract for synthetic turf field civil and lighting construction at Cloverdale Athletic Park in the amount of $2,655,450, and that's for the third field.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate part R148, funding request to Godri Memorial Mela for an amount of $6,000.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate part R149, the Birdland area neighborhood, actually, Madam Mayor, I'm not going to move this one today.
Okay, can I have a mover?
I'll move it.
Second. Okay, it's on the floor, Counselor LeFrank.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've received a lot of emails about this particular down, downzoning, and so I'm wondering if, through you, Madam Mayor, if planning could give us sort of a synopsis of what happens next with this downzoning application.
Okay, it's, I think, sitting at about 41% of the people asked for this, and now we'll go out and do some serious assessment of whether or not there's any interest in this, in this, but I will defer to the planner.
Madam Mayor, that is correct. So this is kind of the first phase of a potential downzoning, so there's been a request from the neighborhood, so this is to formally ask council the permission, if you will, to work and canvass the neighborhood, and then come back with a report outlining the results.
Thank you, and so under the, my understanding is that when we have that high of a number of people on the list, that we have to go ahead and, and go through this process, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, that is correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Gill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I know that in, in mid-April, we had a similar request in, in Cloverdale, and I know that we're within this process. Immediately after that council meeting, I had a, a number of delegations that came to my office who expressed concern, and they were quite concerned in terms of, you know, what was happening in the community and, and in the context of misinformation. So, Madam Mayor, the question I have for, for staff is that I know that generally when we're doing an LAS, I believe that we require 50% of the residents who own 60% of the properties to be the catalyst for us to consider any LAS, so the question I pose back to staff is, do we have any policy in terms of what would be required of the community for us to start this consultation process, because I do believe that, that this is going to be pretty consistent with what we might see in, in the immediate future, but I really would like to have some context of what, what, what would really draw us in, in terms of getting involved in this process at, at any particular time.
Madam Mayor, to Counselor Gill, we usually have to have a clear majority, so that would be more than 50%, usually it's upwards of 70% or more, in order for us to have a positive recommendation for council's consideration. There's been other similar process in the city that did not proceed, following the consultation, and us receiving the feedback from the neighborhood, so this is only the first step of the process at this point, at this point in time.
Counselor Hayne, did you have a follow-up?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and I liked the, the last comment you made, because I, the correspondence that I've been receiving has been both, both supportive and, and against this, and, and some of the emails are citing that certain people who had signed up to, to want to do this have now changed their mind, and so on, and quoting statistics and percentages, and I think this is the very reason that we're going to go through this process, to, to really determine what is the community's wish, so I, I just want to assure the public that live in that area that this will be a thorough, open, and fair process, and that everybody will, will have their say in this, and then council will be able to decide from there what the, what the outcome is. So this isn't the end of a process, this is simply the beginning with no predetermined conclusion to it.
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Villanouf.
Well, thank you. I was just going to reiterate something similar, and we just went through in the last year and a half, two different neighborhoods in Ocean Park, they went through this process, one neighborhood decided to do it, the other neighborhood decided not to do it, so I think what I did see in that process is ultimately, it gets to the result of the real feelings of the neighborhood, so I trust it, and so I know the Birdland neighborhood and the character of that neighborhood, and I think it's fair, if there's that much interest, to go through the process and to determine exactly what would be the right thing to do in the neighborhood, so I'm, I'm confident that the process will be successful, that's why I think it's fine to go forward.
Counselor Steele.
Thank you very much. Well, I agree with the previous speakers, I think that, that it is a, a neighborhood that a lot of people do want to maintain the character, I actually brought my children up in that neighborhood, and I've heard a few of the neighbors that have contacted me personally and said some against and some for, so I, I think it's a viable neighborhood for this to be done, and I think we should let the process begin.
I'll call the question on the, on the report, then. All those in favor? All, any opposed?
Contrary.
Thank you, and that passes.
Move corporate part R150, award of contract for design and construction of the new compressed natural gas station at Surrey Operations Centre in the amount of $2,304,309.69 to Clean Energy Compression Corp.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, that's carried.
Move corporate part R151, funding request for the 2017 Surrey Social Innovation Summit in the amount of $30,000.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
I'll move the recommendations on R152, on the Surrey Poverty Reduction Coalition Progressive Court.
Second. Thank you. We had a presentation on that this afternoon. It's on the table, Counselor Villanouf.
Well, I just want to comment that the Surrey Poverty Reduction Coalition has been doing great work for the city, putting together a poverty reduction plan and following through on the recommendations that the city is able to do, and has been a great convenor for other partners in the city trying to deal with this really important issue. I, I just publicly want to acknowledge Counselor LeVere LeFrank and I have been working on the coalition with about 20 other partners in the city, and it's co-chaired with Steve Dooley, who is the executive director of Simon Fraser University, and I think, as Madam Mayor said, and she's used this report across the country to model the fact that Surrey has been very successful with this initiative, so I'm really pleased to see that report, and I think it's a good basis of knowledge for council to know really how much has been achieved, and the fact that people are working effectively on this very important issue, and it also includes some, some funding to keep the coordination strong for this committee, and so I appreciate that from council.
Thank you, Counselor, for your comments, and when you recognize that our city has more poverty amongst young people, and more children in poverty than anywhere else in the province, you, you realize how important this initiative is, and we'll be quite happy to share it with the provincial government as they develop a poverty reduction plan of their own.
And the federal government.
Federal government, I've long given it to. And they're also developing a plan, so you're right, hopefully they're already using it, but thank you for that. Moving on to bylaws, business arising.
Move third on H1, Madam Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Also on H1.
Counselor Woods.
Yes, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, just one comment on that, I'd like to complimentary staff on that, the original proposal only had six trees, and staff worked with the developer and saved five more, so kudos to our staff, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor.
Also, Madam Mayor, on H1, move that council's support issues of DVP 7916032900 upon final adoption of related bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on two.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Also on two, move that council's support issues of DVP 7917006600 upon final adoption of related bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Counselor Villanouf, you speaking to two?
Clear.
Okay, now, number three, what is the wish of council?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to move the third reading for discussion.
Okay. Putting on the ta, do I have a second to put it on the table? Thank you, it's on table. Counselor Woods.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I'm all in favor of restricting the traffic flow in that loop by putting in a gate or some sort of baller situation there, I, I support that, but I'm also concerned with regards to the trees, and I know that, that it's city policy with regards to frontage to establish the road network and let the developer pay, and I, I can understand that, but I, I also think that there is a time that sometimes you need to deviate from some policy, and I've been out there, I've viewed these trees, they're magnificent trees, and it just pains me to, to see them gone. I've met with, actually, Counselor Frank and I met with the general manager of engineering. We went through the trees that I thought that bear merit for a second look at to try and retain. So I'm, want to make a motion here to refer this matter back to staff and see if we can, in fact, save some of those trees, maybe by some unconventional thinking here, maybe getting money from the developer, so that the frontage isn't developed right now, but down the road, the money is there for it to be developed, so...
Okay, can you hold that motion while we...
Thank you.
I have a lot of speakers on the original motion on table. Counselor Gill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I think what we have in front of us today is, is really the land use, and there's no question that what the applicant is, is proposing is similar to what's in the neighborhood, so really the issue is not about the land use today, the real issue today is, is the Eighth Avenue and North and 165 A Street in terms of what, if, if anything should happen on, on that end, but certainly I think that, you know, a speaker earlier indicated, you know, pick your battles, and what I think we should be doing tonight, Madam Mayor, is, is re-looking at the land use, which is RF zone, single-family lots, which is similar to what, what's in, in the immediate neighborhood, but certainly I think that it's really important for us to not only achieve any future dedications that we have, which would be the road dedication that we're looking at, I think that there's an opportunity here to work with the developer on, on two counts, whether the, we, we ask the developer to have cash and loom provided for the costs... to have cash and loop provided for the costs associated to that future road, or alternatively, look at having that road completed and then being able to restrict access. I'm very comfortable with what I've heard from the community in sense of what they would like to achieve, I think the community's been very clear. So for tonight, Madam Mayor, what I am proposing is that we support the application in terms of third, but prioritize getting to fourth and final, that we resolve the issues as it relates to opening up 8th Avenue, and I'd like to have additional information back from engineering at that time to look at what options are viable. I know that Councilor Hayne indicated that, you know, putting some kind of bollard system in there, I think that would be my thought as well.
Thanks, Councilor Gill. Councilor Villanueva?
Well, thank you, I certainly agree with Councilor Gill in the tabling back to relook at the tree retention and the road works, and I agree with the neighborhood that we don't need to open up that access into the loop. I agree with the woman that came forward talking about King George Boulevard and the other two accesses to 8th Avenue, they're straightforward without having to go through that cul-de-sac. I know the neighborhood very well, I will publicly say my children live in the South Meridian neighborhood and on the cul-de-sac, and how beautiful the neighborhood is, and how they have beautiful trees retained in some of those lots, so I think some of it's achievable. And I guess I would just ask the question about a different road standard, and whether that would be adaptable. I look at some of the subdivisions that originally went into the South Suri area, I've lived there for 45 years, like Amble Green and some of the subdivisions in Elgin, and they have reduced road standards. And why we, in this area, that's really not depending on collector and arterial connections, why we couldn't look at a reduced road standard that might facilitate saving those trees? Not taking the road through the cul-de-sac, but just to access those properties and possibly retain the trees? Because if you look at it, it's a four or five block radius that we're looking at for the road, and to have a narrower road that might preserve the beautiful fir trees, I think it's worth taking a look at, and I think it's acceptable. But we're talking about emergency access for someone that lives in a community with 400 households, only has one access into the community and out, it's not ideal, plus we have a train going across that access, but we are surviving, and I think it's, there are many areas in Suri that have reduced access, but in order to find that balance between road networks and environmental salvage, I think we have to be open to looking at some different standards and use other monies for contribution to works in the area that will help facilitate some of the traffic flow.
Thanks, Councilor. Councilor Frank?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a meeting with some of the residents, and what I heard from them is that they would very much appreciate having some sort of barrier on the access road, and I'm fully in support of that if we can make it work. And as for trees, if we can get some meandering sidewalks, et cetera, that would be great, but I also heard from the neighborhood that they recognized that there would be some tree loss, and so I'm happy to support the proposal being, going through to third today with some of those concessions being made for the neighborhood. Yeah.
Thanks, Councilor. Councilor Hayne?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and I have to congratulate my colleague Villanueva, Councilor Villanueva, for being able to work the train into this particular application, it's well done. But seriously, I do as well support the land use, and it seems as though the community is not against the land use of these lots. But I wholeheartedly agree that somehow we don't want to create a situation where there is rat running and open up the neighborhood unnecessarily. So I would suggest that we support the, we would support the application for the land use, and I would like very much to see engineering come back, engineering and planning come back to us with what might be a workable solution with bollards and so on, but also with a road standard that would allow for emergency vehicles only if necessary, but not through traffic, and save as many of those Douglas Furs as we possibly can, so that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Councilor Steele?
Thank you very much. Well, I think Councilor Hayne described utopia for this neighborhood, and I have to say that the good, solid, and very respectful presentations, we appreciated that, I did. I agree with the things that have been said, I think that the bollards and all of that are appropriate answers. Because I heard so much love and attention for seniors and children, particularly in the neighborhood, it would be very short-sighted of us not to make sure that emergency vehicles can get through there should they be required, and I would have a problem with blocking it off completely. Other than that, I support the reading for third reading and taking it back for the fine tuning.
Okay, I'm going to make my comments known, and, yes, and, yes, you've spoken, I'm going to make my comments known in support of the land use. I think, I think Councilor Gill hit the nail on the head when he said that is our role as the council to determine whether or not we agree with the land use, and I certainly do agree, that is contiguous with the other properties in the area, and I do support the land use. I frankly don't support the road at all, I'd keep the trees, we've managed to live with it this long, and clearly the neighborhood is completely opposed to it, and I just don't see the point at this juncture in the history. If there is a necessity to ensure that we have the funds for such a road, if the future were to demand it, then I would suggest that we look to the developer for some kind of contribution early on, but until we know, I don't even support taking down the trees to put up the bollards, because I see no point with, we're adding six homes to a neighborhood that has lived this long with an in and an out, only one way, and I don't think those six homes are going to make so considerable a difference that it begs the question that the road is at this point in time completely necessary. I know I'm breaking the heart of some engineers, I just know it, but honestly, I just don't see the point, and I do have to confess that I too have family in the South Meridian area, and it is a lovely area, but I wouldn't move the trees or the road, I would just allow six homes to be built on that lot as they're allowed to do, so I don't know what, now it's sitting on the floor for third, so I'm not sure if somebody wants to make a, if we go through the process of giving it third for land use and then a second proviso on the road, I'm willing to entertain that. So I'm going to call the question on the land use of six lots on that area. All those in favor?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me?
Councilor Woods?
Yes, I would just like to give city manager an opportunity to ask his view on this. Sorry, Madam.
Certainly, as soon as it pushes button, there you go.
Sorry.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just some information for council, and we recognize the will of council to keep all those trees, but the frontage road may, some works may be required to service these six lots and the driveways, and some of those trees, you know, the lots have to be serviced, and so we could work with the developer to maximize the number of trees we retain, not widen the street unnecessarily, but a lot of those trees likely will pose an impediment to actual service the lot, so.
Yeah, I was talking particularly, my comments were relative to those that were right on the 8th Avenue frontage, those three majestic trees that were, that I fully recognize those other trees would have to come down based on the construction along the 165A and the, and obviously the driveways.
Yeah, we would keep any, every tree we can save.
Yeah, my comments were only relative to that, and, okay. Councilor Gill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I know that we've had a lot of conversation on this particular topic, but what I would like to propose, Madam Mayor, is that, I know that the second motion that's been requested by staff is that council issue this, issue the DVP for the lot layout that we have in front of us. So what I'm going to suggest, Madam Mayor, if I may, is that should it be necessary that, like, I'll move that, should it be necessary that council support the issuance of DVP 7917018400 upon final adoption of the related bylaw, I'll move that, and then that'll be in the context of staff working with the developer and the community if necessary to relook at how or if the lots need to be redesigned in the context of what we're trying to achieve.
So you're saying five and six would follow four in the same direction potentially?
Possibly, if that is what comes back from staff.
Okay, just before I say, move on with that, I want to hear from the city solicitor, I would not require another public hearing if we put those lots in a different direction.
Madam Mayor, I think I hear a little bit of angst on this last-minute tweaking, just to make sure that we can actually achieve what council wants on this and the community wants, so possibly we could refer this back to get a report on how we can meet all the objectives of what we've heard tonight, provide a report back, and then council can consider it. I'm just concerned that if we get into a place where it's, we can't, we can't meet all the objectives of the motion.
We're throwing too many wishes at you all at the same time? Okay, so.
All of their heads are nodding.
All of the, I see all the staff heads nodding, yes. So let's, but we don't want to delay this beyond the summer break for, so you have it back on the 24th?
Madam Mayor, we'd do our best, I mean, it will require the consultant also from the proponent to do some works, because this is a major rejinging of the application, so, but we would do anything in our powers to bring it back, but it does require some work from the applicant.
Okay, are these still relevant, these? Councilor Woods, you still wish to speak to that?
Well, Madam Mayor, I support the recommendation of the city manager to get a report back, but I want to be clear that also, I understand that there's a real possibility that some of the trees along the eastern portion are going to have to be removed, simply because of the servicing, but I'm depending on staff to utilize their good discretion. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Hayne?
Given this, Madam Mayor, was it appropriate then to make a motion to refer back with some specific recommendations?
I think we could. Now we've got Councilor Gill.
Madam Mayor, regardless of how those lots are orientated, what the land use is still going to be RF in, under both scenarios. So, Madam Mayor, what I would propose is that we move third on this tonight, and I think that the community and the developer have confidence that in fact the land use is consistent with what we spoke to, and then perhaps do a second motion and have staff work with the community and the applicant in terms of how those lots should be potentially orientated with, based upon the principle of not opening that access point on 8th Avenue.
And not dealing with the development variance tonight?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. That, will that suffice, Mr. City Manager, in terms of simply moving on the land use? I'm getting a yes, nod for.
Madam Mayor, we can certainly, on the six lots, we're not certain if they can be serviced without the two frontage roads. Now, how much of that frontage road is built, that's something definitely staff can work with the applicant, in other words, you can get the dedication, but you don't have to build out the road to the same width.
But I believe Councilor Gill's motion would allow that to happen, because what we would be asking for is the land use on the six lots, and then come back to us and tell us what you can do about the, either minimizing the 8th Avenue frontage road or eliminating it. I think that satisfies council in terms of we've done our best. Okay, so I'm going to call, is council okay with that? I'm going to call my, call the question on that. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Okay, and so we'll get the report back on the art of the possible, relative to the either elimination, smaller, or bollards. One, two, three options.
Correct, Madam Mayor, and we'll work our best to bring it back as soon as possible.
So hopefully the public understands that.
Madam Mayor, I'll take the liberty of moving third on four.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
I'll move third on five.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On six, under permit approvals, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7916042001.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On seven, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 791701300.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On eight, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917027700.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On nine, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917026100.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 10, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917024900.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 11, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 791702500.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 12, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917024500.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 13, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917024300.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 14, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917025200.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 15, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917024600.
Second.
In favor? In opposition? Carried.
On 16, move the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 791702400.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 17, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917021600.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 18, move the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917021300.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 19, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917020800.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 20, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917026300.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 21, move the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917024800.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move final adoption on number 22.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On the 23, on the Suri Officer Indemnification Bylaw, move first.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carried.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 24, on the Delegation Bylaw, move first.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carried.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 25, on the Purchase and Expenditure Bylaw, move first.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carried.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Carried. Any notices of motion, councilors? And any other business? Oh, we have bylaw enforcement officer appointments.
Did I miss that?
Yeah, in the addendum, you did the second one.
Sorry, Madam Mayor.
It's okay.
Report? IQ?
Yes.
Move IQ.
Second.
All those in favor?